...will now come to order. Please sign your phones. Let's stand for the board of commissioners.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping, but just go ahead and stay right there. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I will read out the agenda as presented.
Second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, both of you, raise your right hand. Aye, repeat your name. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. Repeat that.
I do solemnly swear...
Both of you at the same time.
At the same time?
Yeah. You solemnly swear...
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And all local ordinances of the town of Lakeview.
And all local ordinances of the town of Lakeview.
And then I will faithfully...
Yeah. And then I will faithfully...
And honorably discharge myself...
And honorably discharge myself.
In the office of town councilor.
In the office of town councilor.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is elect a council president.
I make a motion to nominate Darwin Johnson.
Darwin, nominated, anybody else? Here, none? Do I hear a second? One?
No, never mind. I'll second.
Okay. Oh.
Aye.
Okay. And you all have your consent agenda? Uh, let's move on down to guest speakers, communication, informational items. We have our LOC bulletin in there, which is your Lake of Oregon cities.
Right here. You have a consent agenda, did you get a motion on that?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm jumping ahead here.
I made a motion, right, to approve it.
Okay. Go here, second?
I'll second.
Motion to make the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, then we'll move on. Um, your LOC bulletin. Which, uh, one of the items is on our... Yeah, it is also in the thing. Uh, the city day at the Capitol on January 24th, 2019. So if anybody's, uh, planning to attend that and need to see Donna and Roberta, does they need to get a hotel room?
That's very informative. I don't know if we have, well, obviously, possibly have not attended that, but it is pretty informative. So, if a couple of you want to go, let me know. Carpool it or whatever you could do.
Next, for the moment, department reports. Darrell is not here. Dennis, fire department?
I have nothing further unless you have questions.
In case, uh, some don't know, we acquired some property, uh, over on, between North Second and North Third on H. Uh, Dennis has been over there working on that. We've put, uh, extra vehicles and fire apparatus and stuff like that over there for right now. Get it off the back lot, opened it up. And in fact, some of the chairs that's in here came from over there. They were in good shape. Um, 911, it's about to come out here. Public works?
I just have one small comment. Uh, Roberta and I had a meeting with some ODOT dignitaries a couple of weeks ago, and they asked us at that time to remove the decorations that are in the junction uptown at 140 and 395. And I know a lot of people worked really hard on that, and they thought also that it looked really nice, but it's something that they said they can't have at that junction, so that's going to be going away pretty soon, and we don't really have any choice in the matter. Our agreement with them says that any change to that spot had to be approved by them. We didn't realize that at the time when we gave permission to do so, and a lot of people put a pretty solid effort into that, and I think it looks really nice, but that'll be going away here this week, so...
Is there something we can get, kind of go back and fix that approval process?
Um, it, it sounds to me like this has happened in quite a few towns, and I think we would be fighting a uphill battle. I don't think they're going to change it.
No, they also mentioned, uh, one on the south end of town, too, the hay bales.
But that's not part of the...
Out of there right away. They said it can stay.
No, but it's on the higher, they mentioned that, but...
They said they don't have a problem with it.
Okay, they changed that? Okay? There you go.
Question?
Yes.
Mayor, Ray, may I ask Jeff a question, please?
Go ahead.
Jeff, since I was involved in that, um, we were told that we could put something there up to four feet, but that's not true.
That's not the case, yeah.
Okay, so are, are you going to remove those implements?
We would, yeah.
Is there any possibility that we could get the old tractor seat back, the old...
Oh, certainly, yeah. We'll, we'll put it out there very carefully.
Okay, so where, where, where will it go?
Where would you like it?
I don't know. Somewhere where we could take it out.
Barb Stevens talked about the possibility of putting it down on the south end with the decorations they started down there.
Oh, okay.
So that's one option. We'd gladly take it down there. And ODOT also said that the only thing at this point they would approve in there is vegetation that would stay short, so...
Oh. There's a sprinkler system underneath it, too. So, do you, will you be in contact with Barb Stevens? Is that where you go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We would gladly store it until, a lot of times, you know, someone's, maybe if the better weather conditions, would want to put it down there. We could even store it, this being the time.
Oh. Okay, well, if she wants to use it, that's great.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
I can't...
And I apologize.
One of the, um, ideas, too, is before we rip everything out, to possibly take a picture of it and go down and, and see if they will approve some of it before we rip everything out. You know, I know they suggested we bring it out, but that might be... We may be able to gain on it, may not, but it's worth a try.
We could sure try it.
To see if they believe it?
Yeah. I mean, because it was somebody not even in our office, rather, that noticed it, right?
Right, a regional manager.
A regional manager, but if we went and talked to my neighbors, maybe, maybe he actually sees that.
He said he had no choice, but I'm, I'm not opposed to giving it another try.
I'd like to give it another try before we take it all out.
Couldn't you also wait for them to present an order or something and then challenge the order? I mean, they might lose. I mean, it's a little aggressive, but, uh, if it's below the sight lines and if they don't own that property, I actually...
It's kind of a little, it's a touchy situation, but it's not visibly impairing anything.
No, it's, that's not the issue. They said someone could hit it, it could fly out in front of another vehicle. I said, what about anchoring it? And they said it has to go away.
I would recommend try and get the, you're going to get a lot more flies with honey than, because ODOT likes to hit, I mean, the tall man signed, kind of, the last time we had a major issue with that, and that didn't go so well. And they, I think they, they kind of tried to play it out as long as they could and ended up with one of those final orders, and I would guarantee you they'll do one if you don't, so it's much better to try to ask and see if you can get something in between. I still think the answer probably going to be no, knowing ODOT, but if you're going to have any chance at all, go through local, and I think they might, you might have a better chance with them, spring a random rod for you, because the regional guy is automatically saying no. Sometimes the local folks can get a little more traction, but I'm not, I don't want to be giving them false hope, because again, their default response is no.
Yeah.
I know, I know, I'm just trying it, so...
Prolong it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? Anything else, Jeff?
Nope.
Uh, Roberta, town manager?
I did have a handout, and that's not everything that I do. I don't know if you have a chance to read it. Um, that's just the things I do outside the norm, like they, they, they do work, some meetings I had, and then I had that one that you had with ODOT, so, yeah, just meeting with people.
All moving to home business, Lakeview PD, Lake County Sheriff's Office?
And that's just an update. We are moving forward, we're trying to get a contract together, looking at different contracts from different towns to see what works best, uh, waiting for a call back from another town that did that, probably within the last year, to wait for a call back from them, just to see the pros and cons and how it works best. But I've talked to Sheriff Taylor several times and other sheriff, Hubble, and trying to get everything in order as soon as we can, so that the council can review a contract.
And most of these arrangements generally from, some of these attorneys I've talked to that have gone this route, Klass and I being one example, and I got from another attorney that we've worked with before, this process generally takes between six months to a year, just because there are a lot of aspects to it. What you're getting rid of, what you're getting rid of equipment. We also have the complication of 911 service. It looks like we are going to be able to do something that is more complicated than normal, because most cities do not run 911, so that's another aspect to it. So, it's going to happen, but there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, and it's got to be done right, because this is going to be something that you're going to do a minimum of at least five years, so you need to have that all locked down.
Uh, let's move on to new business then. Resolution 952, change order number two, Morel Construction. Whereas the town of Lakeview hired Morel Construction LLC to complete water improvement on North Second Street, and whereas the attached changes were made from the contract price and certification. Whereas the change to the original contract were recommended by the town of Lakeview engineer, Darrell Anderson, Anderson Engineering Services. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town council of the town of Lakeview authorizes change order number two for Morel Construction LLC. Section one, changes were recommended by town engineer Darrell Anderson, Anderson Engineering Services, and section two, change order number two, changes in the attached request in the amount of $9,928.19, increasing the total bid from 872,811 to 882,739.19. And if council will look back, you'll see deduction of meter setters. Instead of paying $15,928.19, they deducted $6,000 off of that because they were the wrong leaders. And so now, we just, uh, make up the difference of $9,928.19. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
Is this still within the bid? Are you still within the amount?
It increased the amount.
Well, I know it increased the amount of the total project, but is it still within the amount of, I'm trying to remember this project, did it was through a grant or...
No, it was not.
It was just through the water department, so... I'll make a motion to approve change order number two, Morel Construction LLC, Resolution 952.
Well, you have a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Can you sign?
And this is it, right?
Most of you carried?
Yeah. The rest that has to be done is the paving and our discussion. They have some rechange left also, um, but the paving has to be done, and of course, we can't do it this time of year, so we're going to try to talk to them a little bit, whether we do it ourselves, maybe a little, I don't know, less expensive. We're not sure yet, but those discussions, we are going to be having.
Okay. Uh, next, Lake County Council. I don't know how you pronounce that.
You finished calling me Saint. Should I just say from here, it says?
Yeah.
All right. So hello, uh, my name is Arvinda Singh, uh, I go by Singh. Uh, I'm the community health coordinator at the Lake Health District and, uh, the chief coordinator for Lake County. So I have a small announcement to make. Uh, the Health District will be receiving $25,000 to address the social determinants of health in Lake County. So the community advisory committee decided to use half of that amount to address nutrition needs, uh, by building on an existing nutrition program in Christmas Valley. Uh, the other half that has been decided, uh, was to address physical activity in Lakeview. Uh, so the plan is to purchase a play structure for the Ser Optimus Park. So we had a teen health fair around a month back at the Daily Middle School, and we had asked the students to, uh, vote for their preferred play structure. So this fancy thing got most of the votes. Uh, so other than the play structure, uh, the community health department, uh, plans to hold two events, uh, before the end of the year at the Ser Optimus Park to promote , uh, physical activity for the families. So that's about all. Uh, my announcement was, uh, do let me know if you have any questions or comments.
I, I will have a comment, I guess, that we need to look at our contract with PP&L before we approve that, because it seems to be that we, I haven't read it for a long time, but we need to get their approval before adding any new structures onto that property.
So I have some information on that. So Jamie Davis, who works at the OSEA Extension Office, uh, she reached out, uh, to the, I keep forgetting the name, Pacific?
Pacific Power.
Pacific, Pacific Power, and they were like, uh, yeah, just ask, ask the town of Lakeview, and if they are fine with it. Uh, I can obviously file you the email or reach out to them again.
I think we probably should.
Yeah.
Table this until we get that information, because they have to approve the structure, is my understanding.
Yeah, and my suggestion would be get something from them in writing. I, I believe that they've always been pretty good about doing that. Get something in writing and then do it as form of a resolution, if that is an attachment.
Really put anything on there except the, uh, frisbee.
Disc golf?
Disc golf, yeah. I mean, yeah, yeah.
And when we redid that lease agreement, I do have the correct contact for that, to get that to you.
Perfect, and before I conclude, I had just one more question, so, uh, we will need a letter of commitment from the town of Lakeview. Uh, is there a particular email? I should, uh, ask our grant writer to file that letter of commitment email, or... Because we were wondering, we were just gonna send it to Roberta Vanderwall? Should, that, that should be good enough?
Not pass it on.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's true, Bob, that would be, that would play a good role.
Well, we like to go down, I mean, that's something I would like to do. It would be good, but it's also very isolated there. The kids go by themselves. They could get into trouble.
Okay, next on the...
I use it like I do.
On the agenda is the lodging tax committee recommendation. Judy Graham, Western Heritage Committee for RAC cards. We have a letter here.
And, yeah. And before, Judy? Oh. Yeah, excuse me. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Judy Graham, and I'm here on behalf of our Western Heritage Committee, a Chamber of Commerce. In November, I sent that to Roberta, uh, flew Roberta to the, to the town requesting $545, uh, from the, from the tourism money that I understand that you are not, the town is not collecting, to print, um, 10,000 RAC cards. This is a RAC card promoting Lake County Roundup's 100th year and tourism around Lake County and the Chamber of Commerce. And as I understand it, was that request granted, Roberta?
Actually, then it went to the next step, which was the advisory committee for the lodging tax.
Okay.
And I believe Mike Warren is here to let us know the recommendation on that, or...
It was approved.
It was approved. So, yes, it was approved by the lodging tax committee. So, and then they have to just recommend approval to the council.
To the town council, okay.
Yeah.
So how does that process work? Once the council, either, if the council approves of this request for $545, do we, then are we free to have the RAC card printed, um, submit a bill to you, and the town pays? How does that work?
We can do it either way. Once the council approves it, we can either write a check directly to the vendor.
Oh, okay.
Or we can write it to the Chamber of Commerce, Western Heritage Committee, in that event.
Which is probably what you want to do, is that correct, Jessica?
Yeah, the Western Heritage Committee, each of the committees have their own account through the chamber, so they're ready to roll with all their county needs.
Okay. Thank you, and these RAC cards will be distributed all over Oregon, possibly Northern California, to, as a promotional means for Roundup this next year. I appreciate that, thank you very much.
And actually, the council, if they want, can approve it, if they want, if somebody wants to do a motion and see that requested, that you guys are ready to do that.
Yep, I make a motion to approve the...
Pardon me?
Committee member.
I, I'll be glad to get your statement.
Okay, before I sit down, excuse me, I, I would like to take this time, though, to very much thank Jeff Marshall and the town of Lakeview for putting up our new banners for Roundup this year for promotional reasons. We really appreciated your work, Jeff, and the town for allowing that to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanted to tell the council that the committee did meet, uh, last Thursday, I believe it was, and we took up this issue that had been a request that had been pending for, for a couple of months, and so we felt like we should go ahead and act on it. But there's a lot of direction that needs to come from the council, as was discussed by the committee in regards to guidance and the endeavors of which you want the Lodging Tax Advisory Board to act and to move forward. So I'll meet with Roberta and go over the concerns, and she can share that with you as a council. But we did feel that since this one request had been pending for a while, even though it doesn't fit the official guidelines, as will be determined by you guys, uh, we felt that it did fit criteria to gain tourism or exposure for the town of Lakeview. And so we requested that the town of Lakeview receive identity on the card, and so the approval request was granted by the committee, but now, as Roberta said, that's up to you best.
Thank you.
I'll visit with Roberta and Warren on the concerns of the committee members.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
You bet.
So I'm in motion to approve this request as presented by Judy Graham, at the amount of $545 for the 10,000 RAC cards.
Thank you.
Which is a, a steal, like a 500,000 card. Just a little over $500,000. That's good.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Most of you carried?
Thank you, towns.
Okay, next, um, Justice Roberta's, request for liaison commitments to various county chamber committees.
Okay, so Judy just talked on the Western Heritage Committee, but we have three committees, um, that came out of our rural tourism studio that was back in April 2018, with, um, Travel Oregon, Travel Southern Oregon. All three of these committees have been working since April. Um, we are currently, Lake County is currently ranked in the top two of the top performers in Oregon at this time for the rural tourism studios. So we've beat out every county in Oregon except one. So for our work that we're all doing in all three of these committees, um, they are moving fast with their projects, they're getting funding, they've got, received two grants, both from Travel Oregon, two different committees, and they've received other funding, and they're constantly looking for funding. I feel that they're moving really quickly and they're making a lot of ground. Um, we'd like to have a liaison at the council at each of these meetings going forward. They usually meet once a month, um, they usually meet at the chamber. Um, so I'd like to just have some representation so that you're in the know of what's going on. Um, Western Heritage is doing a lot of work and will be doing a lot of work on the beautification of Lakeview specifically. Um, also frontline classes that they're going to have for, um, business owners. We're working on, you know, hinging posts with, with bike, for bike racks and doing more flags for Roundup. So, um, Geological Committee has just received a grant from Travel Oregon in an amount of over $8,000 to do their first project, which is a brochure on all the geological features in Lake County. And the Outback Trails Committee is, um, busy with their first grant, um, mapping and putting reassurance markers that are in compliance with search and rescue as well, um, out on the, what's now designated as the Noni Trails, Bullard Canyon. So they're doing that, um, currently. They have an end date of May, I believe, for their grant, and so we'd really like to have, with so much movement, we'd like to have one of you attend each of these meetings if possible as a liaison, so that you're aware of what we're doing and our work with Travel Oregon and Travel Southern Oregon.
So are there three?
There are three.
Travel Southern Oregon, Travel Oregon, and, listing here is Western Heritage.
No, so Travel Oregon is the state tourism.
Okay.
It's our current state tourism. Um, Travel Southern Oregon is the regional, regional tourism. Um, our committees are through the chamber, so they're Western Heritage, Geological Features, and Outback Trails. We also have a member of the Forest Service on each of those as well, as business owners and, um, various members of the community.
What was that second one you said?
Oh, gosh. Geological features.
No, the, the other one.
Outback trails.
Outback trails.
Yes, so kind of whatever piques your interest the most, I would assume, you know, we'd like to have you attend the meetings. Um, Western Heritage has since split into three subcommittees as well, um, and they're, they're working on, on kind of separating that and working with several goals at this time. Uh, they, we communicate on what's called Base Camp, which is something that Travel Oregon and Travel Southern Oregon watches us on, so they're aware of all of our quick wins, anything they can help us with, um, all the information gets on there so they can watch us with our grant activity. So, again, we really appreciate, and I can email, you guys just let me know which ones you'd like to attend, and I can email you the schedule, put you on Base Camp, so you're aware of everything that goes on.
Thank you.
I'm glad you worked on the Outback Trail.
I'll put you down.
Wait, yeah.
Okay, now we'll move on to liaison positions. And if you look, there's symbol there. I have, I still have my list of who had what from before. I'll start off with the one I had with Police, Safety, Shooting Range, Prison Advisory, Public Works, and Area Commission on Transportation. Sandy had Christmas Committee, Public Works, Lake County Public Safety, Saturday Market, Fire Department, EMFs. Darwin, you had Planning, Dispatch, Ag Farm, Airport, CHIP, Climate Housing Authority, EMS, and SCOW Act. Mike Warren had Community Development Enterprise, 911, our Government Councils, Lake County Economic Development Advisory Committee, Lake County Emergency Management Committee and Lodging Tax. And then, Roberta, you had Regional Solutions Team, Budget Officer, Renewable Energy Enterprise, Red Zone, UGA Fortune Group, MC Museum, Christmas Committee, Labor Negotiations, Emergency Management, SCOW Act, SCOW Act, 911, our Government Agreement.
Sharon?
Sharon. I would like to stay on the Lake County Public Safety Committee. And I will continue the Saturday Market if they do have it this year. And I would like to also do Police.
And which one?
Police. And anything else that's...
I'm trying to, oh, you got, which, go back again.
Okay.
You got Police, Safety Committee?
Lake County Public Safety.
Okay, right there, I got it.
And Saturday Market. And, like I said, anything else?
Okay. Myself, I'm still Public Works. On the Safety Committee. And the PAC, Prison Advisory. Dispatch. I don't see, oh, there's Fire Department right there. There's Fire Department. Okay, that's four for now.
So, Mayor, as we, as we talk through this list...
Yeah.
Kind, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I see four major, you know, kind of categories, right? Police, Fire, Public Works, 911, Dispatch, if you want that together. So, it's always been my opinion that the mayor should really have the opportunity to attend any of these meetings. And not necessarily be assigned as like a, necessarily liaison lead for these, because as councillors, we then report back to you, and you may have your hand in all of this in some way. You know, you guys can have your opinion on this. But that's kind of how I've always felt in this, that the mayor can, I mean, get around, do whatever you gotta do, but then there'll be other councils that kind of focus. So, and then, you know, we can kind of rotate through some of these. I know for years, people are stuck on one area and then other councils never get really an opportunity, you know, on their four-year term, to really learn those things. So, I would love to see this whole list broken out into four groupings, where, and they relate to one another potentially. And after every year, you actually switch it to your role, just to get some, you know, better knowledge of these things. And councillors come and go, but at the four-year term, it'd be nice to know about all these within four years, if you were to stick on and keep seeing them, and you know more about everything. That's just my opinion, I guess.
There's one on here. Oh, I did see it, okay, yeah. So, you're saying you four take the liaisons and I just basically take them all? What's your...
You have ten of them if you're choosing.
This is your appointment list? I mean, this is essentially your list to appoint people to these things. And I, I just think, you know, as your councillors, we would then help you, you know, where you can't fill in or, you know, can't get to something.
The liaisons actually are by vote at the council.
Well, we, we live in a...
We, we kind of work with that.
The council actually, I think under the charter actually appoints, I don't remember, or it's...
This, this came up, I mean, this comes up every January, at least did in the past three years I've been involved in this process, and then Mike will attest to this. He never got the ones he really wanted, and he never got to get involved with the ones he wanted, with those departments to get a better understanding of what they really do day in and day out. And to help see if, if they're getting stonewalled by a councillor or some thing's not happening right, where they're getting, you know, you know, different ears and eyes on, on the situation and they handle day to day.
Well, do you think we should table this? Well, we divide these up.
It's always been hard to do this. And this meeting, I would like this, I mean, to get the list, and then next meeting, well, and then we come back and talk about, you know, maybe negotiate. But to me, that's why if you put this into four categories, four groupings that are similar, then you could rotate, you know, after each year. You would eventually get them all within one term and know a lot of dollars.
Ray, it looks like Jessica has a comment.
I have a question.
Jessica, when is your next chamber meeting?
Well, we just had one, so our next, that was my, my question is, we need a, we need a board liaison on the Chamber of Commerce. That was Sharon, and she's, since she's done, she's now our president. But our next board meeting should be in March. We just had one yesterday.
I'll, I'll, I'll be there.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, you're our liaison?
Yeah.
If that's the case, yeah.
Okay.
Well, interim, temporarily.
In term right now.
We will get this done before the end of this month.
Well, I'll get it broken down tomorrow.
Just one minute, Mike can just start counting.
Yeah, we'll have that figured out later.
And I have actually been trying to serve as best I can on the Western Heritage. There's been a couple I've missed, but I have been trying to serve on it. But I'm more than happy to have one of you guys on it too. But I have tried to serve on that, so.
And that's where, yeah, like, your role will take on some of these other things way more in depth, like SCOW Act and SCOW Act, and you're an executive member on those boards.
Yeah.
One not on here, I'm not seeing, the, that we've been invited to the Roundup.
Oh, right, right. We need to add that. And then that Lodging Tax, I mean, you need to have, well, of course, that's a recommendation to the councils, I guess.
Correct. So, and you, if you have a board member actually on the TLP board, then that board member cannot vote, because they participate in the recommendation process.
So, that needs to be separate, so.
As a non-voting, as an executive, what do you call that?
Why don't, why don't we set up a work session on this?
That would be my suggestion, and it is under the charter of the council that those appointees, so you guys can adopt whatever procedures you like, and kind of put that out. So, a work session would be an appropriate mechanism to divide them up and then kind of see what category you want them in and organize them.
When is my next meeting?
The next one, 20, I'll leave it for calendar, one second.
Oh, yeah, we took the calendar, oh, we didn't remember the calendar.
No, no, not yet, it's coming.
Okay. Where is it?
I will be here in 20 seconds. You want? I will. Oh, okay.
Where is it in here on the charter that...
Subsection, page two, Council, Chapter three, the, in section eight after the mayor, last but paragraph, the mayor's 0.0, covers all of town. Page two of the charter.
Oh, 30.
Yep. The town council for all liaisons.
Okay.
Yep.
I have one question really quick. Did the Roundup ask for a liaison? They've never had a liaison before. They did?
Yeah.
Roundup or Fair Board?
Fair Board.
Fair Board. It's two separate.
Fair Board, yeah. Apparently separate.
Yeah.
It was the Fair Board.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So, are we tabling this then until our next meeting in 20 seconds?
Have a work session and... If it's...
Do I have a motion to table?
Pardon?
Does anyone motion to table it?
Two, one second.
Yeah.
I would, we tabled the liaison appointments until our next meeting.
Do we have a motion?
I did just make a motion.
You made one?
Yeah.
Second.
That's what I've been waiting for, with the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, uh, let's see, do we have anything else to, I got, all I have is other...
Did you look on your new one, the resolution?
Well, I got, yeah, that's coming, uh, okay, we have Resolution 953. matters declaring surplus property. Whereas the town of Lakeview purchased a getter truck last year and no longer uses the truck. And whereas the town has assisted Paisley in the past to clear a flood with sewer lines as the city of Paisley does not have a getter truck. And whereas the city of Paisley would benefit greatly if they could obtain the town's old truck. Whereas that equipment has minimal or no value. And whereas it is in the best interest of the town of Lakeview to dispose of this property as surplus property. Therefore, be it resolved as follows, the town council of the town of Lakeview declared the 1983 Ford C700 getter truck where the mayor, Meyer, 1,000 gallon tank and bumper a surplus property, property to be donated. So, do I hear a motion on that?
Do we want, specifically to say...
They want to donate the truck.
To Paisley right after the...
There's really no value to it.
After the being resolved, I mean, it says Paisley all throughout here, but just after.
Oh, maybe add that to it.
Yeah, just after it should be donated to the city of Paisley.
Okay.
I would make that amendment, just so it's clear.
All right, so I, I make a motion to approve Resolution 953 with the amended Section one, to be donated to the city of Paisley.
One second.
Motion been made in the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay. Now we're going to public commentary. Any public comment?
They're all sitting up here.
Excuse me. We'll go to the mayor and council updates. I will tell you that we want to get meet with the state highway, trying to get the speed zone changed. To me, it's like they were avoiding it. So, what they did was they put a deal out up by Don's Market, tells you how fast you're going. The other day, I headed north, watching the vehicle in the mirror, and he was still doing 40 miles an hour going past that sign, because I see the sign. The other option was also to move the bus stop down further, because when you come around the blind corner, they felt that couldn't stop in time if you needed to. What was the other option there that, that was...
Both have a flagger.
Flagger.
The school, make sure that they have a flagger. With the school bus, you mean?
Yeah. But the problem is that those trucks coming down through there going fast enough that not being able to stop. And when they use their jake brakes from Don's Market down to the junction, like they did a few years while back, tells me they're going too fast. And I mentioned that state highway, they said there was a sign out there. I went out and looked, I didn't see a sign.
But no jake brake one? Or just a speed one?
There was a speed sign out there.
I believe the jake brake sign is just not very far from, actually, Rutgers House.
There's not one, I didn't see one for that.
There used to be one out there.
I'll go out and look again, I may have missed it. But then, just on the, on the funny side, that person approached me the other day, and he says, "I can tell you how the city can make some money." I said, "Oh, how's that?" He said, "Well, you know, the governor always puts out a tag. Why don't you put out a mayor's tag for $5,000?" And I looked at him, I said, "Do you think I'm gonna turn somebody loose in this town with a gun?" Or a bow? But he was serious. And I said, "I don't think, or I mean, ODOT will go for that." So, I thought it was kind of comical. Okay, council, anybody have anything you want to add?
Let's go back to the speed laws for a minute. Has ODOT said that they are not gonna change that?
They're trying to outline other options first.
They recommended that we go talk to the school about either designating it or, or changing the bus stop area, seeing if we can get the area designated, or go ahead, Jeff.
And they also said that their speed criteria is set by federal standards. And so, in order for them to, to reduce that, the feds would come in and they would say, "Well, how many driveways are there in that area?" And the, and the area they want to reduce to 30 or 35, there's like no driveways. So, they said they, they don't really have a leg to stand on as far as reducing speed, unless they can really show, you know, there's been an accident or something.
But, but they do. They're, they're right to appoint, they're, yeah. They did a, a speed reduction from Burns all the way to John Day through a lot of those smaller towns here that were 55 and 65, they've been down to 25, 35. And there's less than five driveways in this town. So, they're, they're right to appoint, but they're using it as an excuse.
Because there's communities there that are not, they have a single driveway for the...
Well, the loading thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, but there's one driveway.
They're, they're...
Not on that side either.
Stretching the federal standard to make it to their convenience, because they don't want to fund weapons. I'd like to be involved in a next meeting if, if possible.
How long were they proposing that speed zone change sign set up, the meter, or whatever they call that thing?
The radar trail.
Yeah, how long were they proposing that sit out there?
They just put it up in, I think, a couple, three weeks, I don't know.
Are they, are they...
They don't really...
One thing I've been seeing a lot in a lot of communities is the school zone might be the way to do this, just because of the, I think, I don't think it costs anything, and I think it's something Darwin and I probably have to go up to school about, but it would be... And then, maybe look at doing one of those, see if you can get a grant for one of those signs that's permanently got the speed on it. That's being used really heavily in a lot of, especially as you go through Pass Oak Ridge, you know, going in, actually, you have Pass Oak Ridge, starting in those communities, like you're kind of coming into Eugene. A bunch of the school districts there have permanent signs that have that flashing. And they also have that in Anel Terrace now too, where it's a permanent speed sign, you know, usually solar powered or something like that, to really get people's attention. And I guess the research is on them, that they really work. So, it might be, if you're gonna really, schools get a lot more, schools get a lot more traction with ODOT than...
So, it would be similar to the one on the highway going south, is, is that, yeah. And that one, I think, does work fairly well.
Right, we did a lot of those at the Safe Russ School Project, I did in California.
Because it, it's just certain hours when the, the kids are going, would likely be crossing.
I know signs were discussed at the meeting also to get them down at the schools, because on Third Street, it's horrible, and I know that it is.
Third Street is bad, and it is around grade school.
Yeah, so, we talked about that. And I did get the name of a gentleman that is head of Public Works and Climate. The, the good one that they put up was about $40,000. He said that they actually got a couple of those that were a lot cheaper, so he gave me the information on that. I just got that today.
And you might be able to apply for a grant or something like that to...
Safe Russ to school.
Exactly.
Because that's a federal program, it's not a state program. And there's about 15 different manufacturers of those signs now. And they, there's a huge range, quality of, of that sign. I've installed probably three minutes of those.
And the school in the town have always had a really good partnership. And the school and the town have always had a really good partnership with this kind of stuff, so I think that's probably, I think you want to elevate it to a little different level, because you start, you know, you really make a front and center, the kids are at risk, that starts feeling different.
My question is, do we have to then get permission from the state highway department to put one out there?
Yeah.
And they would still have their.
They have put it in, and they've gained it.
But, but isn't the, the one, the school zone in the south end of town, wasn't that put in place when it started? Was that that location? It starts now, move, so isn't that one's kind of surplus at that location?
And they're trying to get that moved.
It was there, it's been there since I've lived here, and that's been a long, long time before it started.
And we were gonna get it moved to Third Street, but then discussions at the meeting we had, it may be better at Fourth Street, South Fourth than South Third. And I think it's just a matter of people gonna have to, I don't know how you're gonna find out where the most the kids cross.
Well, it'd be easier to move the one on the north end, just further north, and move the one on the south end where it's at. I mean, the speed limit in town's twenty-five anyway. So there in school hours, if you reduce it to twenty, between Third Street and where it's currently at on the south end, would be better for the kids anyway, because they cross all three there all the time.
Well, it's really South and Third Street.
Right, but move the one in the north end up to Third Street, north to Third Street, and move the south end.
I know a lot of kids walk down Fourth Street and then hit Eighth Street and run Eighth Street all the way down in front of the TMS. That's where I see a lot of foot travel from the kids.
So I'd recommend that the town probably have a presence in the school board meeting and have start that. Like I said, I don't think, I think everybody would probably be in agreement or something like this, on just how you pay for it and how, if you other, but I think you've got, like, through the Safe Rouse Schools Project and stuff like that, I think two entities coming together have a lot better chance of getting on a grant or something like that than just one. So I think the combination of a partnership, if you've done a multiple projects, it would be appropriate, if you guys are interested in for some of that.
I have two suggestions on this topic. One is, I think that the, I don't have any experience working with ODOT, but I think they'll respond better if they have actual data. So if you've got a sign that flashes your speed limit, that's good, and I'm, I'm sure that's effective to a certain extent, but what's really gonna be important is whether, notwithstanding that sign, temporary or permanent, people are still going too fast as they come around a blind corner. So I know that in some states, they have, you know, sort of the road strips that they put across there that measures the speed of a vehicle, you know, the amount of time that it takes between point A and point B. And so you might ask the state, if they have a program, whether they can install that so that there can be actual data about how fast especially heavy vehicles or long vehicles are going in that zone. Flashing is one thing, but get the data, because that's, that's the key to action. And the second suggestion is that in the meantime, someone like Jeff, or Roberta, or both of them, send a pretty formal, polite, professional, but a pretty formal letter expressing in writing to the right person responsible for the thing, that, you know, we have raised a safety concern with you that involves schools and children, and we have not had a positive or any effective response and reaction, and we just want you to know that until, you know, this is taken seriously, you know, the town, and especially the school district, will hold the state responsible for the road liable and responsible to indemnify the town should there be any safety incident, because we shouldn't have to wait until there's been an accident and a liability before someone does the common sense thing. And I know it's hard to get government agencies to work appropriately, but that doesn't mean we can't just write a letter and say, hey, it's on you, in effect.
Safety and liability gets rechanneled.
It really does.
That radar trailer that's out there, depending on what accessories it has, it should be able to do traffic counts and speed data.
Some do, some don't, yeah, but you need that equipment and then the data, but I think in the meantime, just say, you know, on notice, now, we've requested and we've held a formal meeting with you, you don't have any action items to take any additional steps, we have continuing safety concerns, it's on you. And if that doesn't get a response, then pretty shod.
Wasn't it your understanding that it was collecting D.V.A.?
They never really said it was collecting, just give them the speed that they're going, hoping people would see how fast they were going to slow it down.
And it depends on how new it is and what's.
I haven't never, I've got a fairly old one.
The ones they've traditionally used around there have just been more of the shame variety, where they're just showing, they just flash the speed and it's on you.
The new ones do a lot of things.
Right.
The other thing that might be really, sorry, keep butting, but the other thing that might be helpful is when somebody just used their phone, the video function on their phone, and took a picture of a truck coming around that corner too fast, and especially if the picture had, you know, the speed that was, you know, recorded the speed, and then, and you know, and then sent back to the right person, said, you know, it should, might be shaming people, but it is not slowing down the traffic about which we're most concerned. And maybe with the school bus loading there, you know, that would be a real incriminating thing for someone who passed a school bus that was loading at the bus stop.
You see, right now, the school bus stop is right at Rutgers House, and I don't know if you know where they live. They own the big A train.
Oh, right.
Going up from the junction out on north, they're on the right-hand side, and that's where the school bus stopped. But when you come around that corner, you come around the blind corner, because of all the trees and everything.
Get Andrew to make, make a video, and it's very compelling and should cause somebody to.
I think there's gonna be two parts to this. I think what the school needs to do is to stop, to show that they're making an effort, and it leaves a burden. Because that's what it'll come down to, is if the city and the school district is doing what they can to rectify this, call it, and now it's on you guys.
Do we have anything else? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn regular council session and move into executive session as per ORF 1962.